Hello. Yeah, thanks for keeping us on schedule, Hannah. Appreciate it. So it looks like we have two, we have a new commissioner. Welcome. We have two commissioners soon. So we can go ahead and call the meeting to order. Okay. Would you take role, please? Hannah, thank you.
All right. Commissioners present in establishing a quorum. Commissioners Blair, Walker, Nugent, Lewis, Dawkins, and Bull.
Great. Thanks, Hannah. So the public comments, didn't see anyone in the waiting room. Do you see anyone? So it's always great to have the public come speak. I don't know if we talked about that enough when we had two gentlemen come speak to us, yes, or last meeting, but it's always great to have some public inputs. So we'll proceed to minutes from last meeting. And commissioners, any commissioners that were at the July 25th meeting, any edits or comments?
Make motion to approve the minutes.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
My second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Walker, or Jake, I should say. Okay, thank you. Seconded by Are you Randy or? Randy made this second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Okay. Looks like we have one item of old business. And this is the last chance that for us to see it prior to it being shown to city council tomorrow. And Kate is our presenter.
Thank you. So this is a wrap up for the proposed amendments to downtown commercial zone. Again, the, the large intent was to reintroduce the entertainment uses that had been removed back in 2019 when the unified development regulations were adopted. We've gone through the full history. We've talked about some additional amendments to definitions. So before you this evening is the findings of fact for your consideration. If you're agreeable, the recommendation is to have Chairman Bull sign it on your behalf. I do want to point out just a few changes that were made since the last time you saw it. And this was a result actually of the council packet that I had prepared. I got a few more comments. And on page 23 of your packet this evening, the first one is the downtown promenade. There was concern that we were, we were being too specific in our language, making a determination between renter versus owner, and that was not the intent. It was trying to better clarify that it is any space along Main Street. And so the purple strike through edit met the test of those who had some concerns. The next change that was also brought to my attention is on page 25 of 174. And for some reason, we had both movie theater and theater included as called out uses within this designation, or excuse me, within this category. It was suggested that we remove the movie theater. And then when you get to definitions this evening, we've actually revamped the definition. So theater captures both a performing live theater as well as a motion picture. So that change was suggested and accepted. And then because of that, on page 26, there's no longer the need for note number eight in the land use matrix. So those are a few additional revisions. Everything else is the same. You have the draft ordinance that will be presented to the planning commission. The environmental determination of non-significance is also included in your packet for reference, along with the notice from the Washington State Department of Commerce that they accepted it for expedited review, and we did not receive any comments on that. So questions?
Okay. Commissioners, any final thoughts? Where this goes to city council? Fantastic job, Kate. Okay. No hands up with our virtual commissioners. Okay, thank you.
So the requested action is on page 11 of the agenda bill or in your packet. If somebody just wants to read that.
Yes, ma'am. Usually we rely on, we rely on Melanie to do that. She's really good. And she is absent this meeting. So if I could ask someone else. Yep.
I move that the planning commission adopt these findings of fact and conclusions of law, authorize the planning commission to sign the findings of fact on behalf of the commission and recommend that the Monroe City Council approve the amendments to chapters 22.22 and 22.12 MMC Downtown Commercial Zoning District and Definitions respectively.
Commissioners, just looking for a second on that.
A second.
Is that Liz?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. All right, motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And you need that signed before tomorrow night?
Hannah brought it for you this evening. Thank you. And I don't need it tomorrow night. It's just the introduction. Just to let you know, the next steps of public hearing actually had to be scheduled before the council. So that will happen at their second meeting, second regular meeting in August, still on schedule for final adoption in September.
Right. So, okay. Item 6.2, old business is our this is our discussion. This is, I think of our 10th. Is this our 10th discussion? Okay, so we should be pretty good at this. So this is Anita's discussion proposed code amendments to chapter 22.12 MMC Definitions.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Yes, so I'm bringing back another discussion on proposed code amendments to chapter 22.12MMC definitions. So about a week and a half ago, I did forward all the planning commissioners the reorganization of chapter 22.12. So just to give you a little more time to look it over. So the chapter reorganization that's in your packet tonight is basically the same. The only change was the movie theater change that Kate mentioned earlier was suggested by her city attorney to change that, to just make it theater, incorporate the, incorporate movie theater into the, to the actual definition of theater. So that was the only change that's in your packet today. And another, some unfinished business from last meeting as well was the discussion on the sexual sexually oriented business. So I did a little bit more research and as stated before, it is licensed. So those types of businesses are licensed under chapter 5.48. And under the definitions of that chapter, there is in particular, we're talking about adult novelty stores. And so under the definition of adult bookstore, adult novelty store, or adult video store, there has to be a primary purpose for that type of content. So it explains further that it's 50% or more of the stock and trade retail dollar or, or total volume of shelf space of sexually oriented materials. So if we're looking at the store that's on Main Street, the, the amount of retail or of area where they actually sell sexually oriented materials is less than 50%. So that store is specifically looked at as a retail store, not a sexually oriented business under this definition. And any type of business that wants to come in, as we discussed before, can only go into light industrial or some, or certain areas in general commercial. And those are, those are outlined in our zoning map of to where those areas can go. So was there any other questions on the sexually oriented business definition or any other concerns?
Just to clarify, there's a qualifier in the middle of that, or it's either receipts or, or retail shelf space?
Correct.
So it's
So if it fits any of those criteria, it's a one and a two. And if it fits any of those criteria, then it would be considered a sexually oriented business.
Okay.
And that was the last kind of unfinished, unfinished business of our discussion last time on definitions. So I did want to just get your thoughts on how you like the reorganization. It's up to the commission how they want to do that. I was hoping we could just start off by calling out any red flags that you have, maybe discussing those terms or definitions further. But yes, I'll leave that up to the commission on how they would like to proceed.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything that is glaring that we need to address or spend time on this evening?
I want to say thank you for getting that information, especially about the downtown business that's already there. And I see all the SEPA stuff got moved. And I think we've talked about it a lot. And I know it's been a really long time before even we were here, and I'm good with it at this time.
Thanks, Brenda.
And that, I think during the last meeting with the city, that covered the bookstore then, right? Because it's not it's not 50% because they have sexually oriented stuff as well.
Um, the Does particular business on Main Street or just bookstores?
The bookstore that's on Main Street, like that was saving them too, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no businesses that that would
No, no, not, not currently, no.
Okay. Are we looking for an action?
No action tonight. I did just want to discuss it one more time to see if there's any other concerns or questions. I tentatively had this going to public hearing at planning commission on our next meeting on the 22nd. But I'm, I will have to push it out just a little bit, just because I need to get the SEPA checklist out and get this to commerce and some, do some procedural things. But I'll start getting the public hearing noticed and everything packaged for most likely meeting in September.
Okay. And so what is that first, trying to figure out what that first or the second Monday in September, everybody's back in school. So we'll have to worry about commissioners being out, right? I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure we're all going to be here. Okay.
I do have one thing. I know that I like, like all the reorganization, most of it. The part about signs, though, moving them all to the first, so they all now are going to be like, right now it's sign comma A-frame, calm sign up or sign comma abandoned. And the way you've got it is they're all going to go the other way. So abandoned sign, A-frame sign, those two are gonna, you'll still see them in order, but it seems like you'd want all the sign stuff together the way it was originally.
Okay, so, okay, yeah, let me get there real quick. So there's a couple that aren't grouped together.
Well, they are now, but in the draft, it's, the draft is trying to move everything to so it's on page 141 of the agenda packet.
Okay.
Or 86 of the definitions, PDF.
Okay.
I just feel like if someone wants to know stuff about sign definitions, they would have to, in the proposed way, they're going to have to sort through, you know, a lot, a lot of pages when keeping them grouped together by sign comma makes more sense.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just, I want to get clarification because I thought we had done that beginning on page 83 of the definitions or 138 in your packet. The first one is sign, and then it's sign area, and then it follows that way.
Okay, so you're saying the comment is what it's, that's the by it saying moved, then it means
It came from another location.
Okay, then yes, this
Okay.
Thank you. Saying it's that they're moving it.
Yeah, they're coming here. Yes, this looks good.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you for the clarification on that one. So the way, yes, so the way you're looking at it, that's the way it's going to be in the final. And then the comment is just that you know where that came from, basically.
Okay, that's understandable.
Yeah, the thing I would say is this was a lot of material for you to get through. If you're still reviewing it and you have concerns before the public hearing, please feel free to let us know and we'll make note of it. The public hearing is kind of your last opportunity to have the conversation when the public is notified that this is the opportunity for them to provide comments. So I would say if you didn't get all the way through it, or you had second thoughts about something, just continue to keep in touch with Anita. And as needed, we can continue bringing it back to you. And yes, and that's all I had to present today.
Almost, almost all.
Almost.
We have new business.
Yes. So actually, I'm going to have Liam do the next presentation, but I would like to give him an introduction. So this is Liam McCorkle. He is our interim for community development, and this is his first summer doing that with us. So hopefully he'll come back next summer. He came to us in May and he, actually, it's his last week. So he's going to be going back. He's a bulldog. So he'll be going back to Gonzaga in the fall. And we're super excited. So that his main project was the multifamily tax exemption, exemption project. His main task was to do all the research, research the other cities, the RCWs, the state codes, just to present to you tonight to let you know how that works. And some other projects he's been working on is he helped with some middle of a middle housing grant to commerce. And he also, he's the one who actually did the UDR definition organization. So that was 100 plus pages. So thank you for doing that. That saved me a lot of time. That was great. And he also helped us with other code amendments that we're working on right now that we'll be bringing forth to you soon. So yes, he's done an excellent job and it was a big help to all of us. So I will turn it over to Liam.
Perfect. Thank you for the introduction. Do we have my presentation? Perfect. Awesome. Well, hello, everyone. Yeah, it's so nice to meet all of you. I am Liam McCorkle. And today I'm going to be presenting to you on a new program that the city is looking to adopt. This is in the Housing Action Plan, and it is called the Multifamily Housing Property Tax Exemption Program. I will be calling it MFTE for short. Just to clarify, this is an intro presentation, just to give you guys an overview of what is happening and how this code works. And I'd be happy to take any initial or write down any initial questions you might have. Next slide. Perfect. So to give an overview of what MFTEs are, it is codified in the Revised Code of Washington, chapter 84.14. It was adopted in 1995 and then amended in 2007, and then again in 2021. Essentially, what this, what this code does is it exempts developers or allow cities to exempt developers from ad lorem property taxation in exchange for multifamily housing units. Ad lorem property taxation is just a fancy way of saying any residential developments that occur to the property valuation. These term lengths can come in an eight-year, a 12-year, or a 20-year exemption with the eight-year exemptions being market rate, and then the 12 and 20 years both having additional affordable housing requirements. When the state legislator first adopted this program, they initially wanted to fulfill the Growth Management Act's goals to encourage infill development, provide affordable housing, incentivize developers to invest in multifamily projects, and then serve as one tool as a barrier to overcome challenges to redevelopment. And just to give a context from Monroe's commitment to this program, as I mentioned, it is in the Housing Action Plan. It is identified as strategy number five as a way to incentivize multifamily housing development throughout Monroe. It's also makes its way into the comprehensive plan, especially the housing element with encouraging housing variety and affordability. And it's also present in the municipal code and the Unified Development Regulations as an affordable housing incentive that the city may develop. Next slide. So just to give a review or present to you some of Monroe's housing needs taken from the Housing Needs Assessment, and then a couple of other sources. I just want to put into context why this program might be needed or might be very useful for the city. Starting with housing need, you can see in exhibit 25 on the screen or on your sheets that I provided that in order to meet Monroe's housing goal by 2035 housing units target, the city is going to need to add an additional approximately 816 units by 2035. And about a little over half of those is going to be two incomes who are below the median income. Just another interesting statistic is that Monroe's vacancy rate is currently 3.6%, which is 4% lower than 2011. And just for that context, the state of Washington says that a 5% vacancy rate is a healthy target. So currently Monroe is below that, which is just one tool we can look at to see that currently Monroe's housing demand is surpassing the housing supply a little bit. As far as housing variety, you can see in exhibit 17 that currently multifamily residential housing development has lagged behind that of single-family housing development. Currently Monroe's housing stock, about 70% is single-family residential units, whereas only about 8% are two to four multi-unit family residential units and 16% are five or more multifamily residential use development. And yeah, as far as housing affordability, you can see in exhibit 10 that approximately 30 to 32% of Monroe's households are currently cost burdened, which essentially just means that they spend more than 30% of their income on housing, which includes utilities. And this number is actually higher than Snohomish County and Washington at 30% and the national average at 31%. Another statistic that I really want to point out with regards to income distribution is that of the 1,955 Monroe residents who are currently making below 80% of the average median income, 1,225 of them are considered cost burdened, meaning they spend more than 30% of their income on housing. That should really come as no surprise when you look at the changes between 2011 and 2018. Monroe in Monroe's median income has increased by about 14.9%. Whereas the median home value has increased by 78.3% and the median rental price has increased by 21.3%. So once again, income is falling behind that of of housing prices. According to the Comprehensive Plan and the Housing Needs Assessment, the city currently only has capacity to accommodate about one-fifth of all of Monroe's population. So with all of these three things in mind, housing needs, housing variety and housing affordability, an MFTE comes in to help meet some of those challenges by providing affordable housing options as well as multifamily residential development in certain areas. Next slide. So the first thing that the city must look at before it adopts a MFTE program is looking at things called residential targeted areas, which are essentially where the city can give out these exemptions. According to the RCW Revised Code of Washington, a residential urban cent, that targeted area, excuse me, is defined as being within an urban center. An urban center is defined as a compact identifiable district with a variety of uses, including pre-existing and existing businesses. Two, for residential targeted areas, it must lack sufficient available desirable and convenient residential housing, including affordable housing to meet the needs of a public who would be likely to live in such an area if places were reasonably available. And three, and finally, it must meet one of the purposes mentioned in the RCW. So those are all the requirements for residential targeted area. It is completely up to the city as to what to designate a residential targeted area. Some cities have started with adopting just one and evaluating the performance of that before expanding it elsewhere. Others have just initially gone and expanded it to multiple locations throughout the city. Regardless, likely candidates for this program would be in the official downtown planning area, North Kelsey, and some mixed-use developments or zones throughout Main Street. Next slide. Now, where I want to spend a little bit more time is on the exemption lengths and requirements and terms. I briefly mentioned this, but just to go it over it again, there, we can offer an eight-year-long exemption for developments that develop or redevelop for or more multifamily dwelling units in residential targeted areas. We can also offer a 12-year exemption as long as they meet the same requirements as the eight-year exemption and commit to providing at least 20% of the units as affordable to low and moderate income households. We can also offer a 20-year exemption as long as 25% of the units are built by or sold to a qualified nonprofit or local government to assure permanent affordable homeownership. And the average minimum density must be zoned equivalent to 25 units per acre. And then the city can also adopt a 12-year extension for the eight-year and 12-year exemptions, as long as they meet the requirements of the 12-year exemption and also agree to provide tenant relocation assistance when the unit sees to be affordable. These are the requirements that are prescribed by the RCW, but many cities in Monroe could implement additional requirements, annual reviews or reports are common, prescribing a certain number of bedrooms per unit or even an investment requirement. Those are all things other cities have already done. But what I really want to point out is that the city can also look at lowering or adopting more stringent income requirements. I have provided a table up there for you, which compares data from the American Census Survey, which is specific to Monroe, and then data from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is what the RCW says that the income limits must adhere to. And what you might notice, or what I would point out, is that the low income requirements for what the statutory requirements are, are actually higher than the average median family income in Monroe. So if the city's goal is truly to adopt a program that focuses on affordable housing, the city is going to have to look at meeting more stringent standards to meet Monroe's housing, affordable housing need, especially if it wants to reach extremely low income households, low and very low income households, or renters who traditionally see lower family income. Average of lower family income. And that essentially comes down to an issue of priority. Does the city want to prioritize this multifamily residential development, or is a priority this affordable housing piece? In which case, the city might want to consider removing an eight-year exemption or providing additional requirements onto that eight-year exemption. Next slide. So just to briefly go over some considerations, once again, this isn't the only presentation I will, or we will be giving to you. But just to go over some considerations that you might have, this program has been considered very effective throughout the state of Washington. Currently, or currently more than 424 developments have taken place using this program, which has resulted in about 35,000 new units, 21% of which have been affordable. The Puget Sound Regional Council and multiple cities have claimed it the most effective program to incentivizing multifamily residential development. And, and the program has also been expanding significantly in recent years. In 2009, about 2,500 units were approved for this exemption. Whereas in 2021, about 7,800 units have been approved. As far as financial performance for the developers, you can see a rate of return increase for the eight-year exemption. That rate of return increase can be between 1.1 and 3.3 percentage points. Whereas for the 12-year, we can see a rate of return change between negative one and 8.4 percentage points, which becomes higher when affordability rates are closer to the market rates. Either way, while I can't definitely provide to you how often a development becomes feasible after an exemption is applied, I can tell you that the exemptions increase, can increase the development feasibility, which can make developments more likely to occur throughout a city. As far as other jurisdictions. As far as other jurisdictions, you can see a chart up there. But of 102 cities that are eligible for this program, so far 54 have adopted MFTEs and 26 of those have actually approved exemptions through their programs. In Snohomish County, we see that Edmonds, Everett, Linwood, Marysville, Mountain Lake, Terrence and Snohomish have all adopted programs already. And then throughout the state of Washington and Snohomish County, we can see numerous case studies that can help guide Monroe's own program into the future if it is something the city wishes to pursue. Those include places like Bellingham, which has seen 27 market rate developments occur after offering an eight-year and a 12-year exemption. Edmonds has seen three projects by only offering a 12-year exemption. And then Marysville and Snohomish also have programs but have yet to receive any or yet to issue any exemptions. So there are numerous case studies and that'll be presented to you at a later date. But I just want to point out to you that there is a great variety of case studies out there that the city can look at. Next slide. As far as next steps and decisions, once again, this is just an intro presentation. But moving forward, if this is something the city wishes to pursue, it will have to determine which areas to designate residential targeted areas if it wants to designate just one or multiple, including the official downtown planning area, North Kelsey or other mixed-use developments throughout Main Street. The city will also have to consider what exemptions it wants to offer. A lot of cities right now have been considering removing their eight-year exemption because they're not sure whether they want to continue that exemption as it doesn't provide the benefit of affordable housing like a 12-year exemption would. And some are even considering adding additional affordability requirements to that eight-year exemption. And then along the same lines, the city needs to look at additional requirements that it wishes to pursue, especially including those more stringent income requirements on the exemption lengths. And then other than that, it's other information that is needed from staff or elsewhere to establish an effective program. So that was all I have for presenting you this program. And I'm happy to take any initial questions or discussions that you might have.
I have some questions. You did a lot of research on this, so thank you. And what did you see as some best practices that was hitting affordability targets through your research?
Yeah, so what I have seen is obviously a couple of cities have made it so that way the affordability requirements need to be made affordable to very low incomes. So those making less than 50% of the average family median income, as well as some even extremely low incomes, which are below 30% of the average family median income. And then I believe, I can't remember exactly which city it was, but one city, instead of following what the Department of Housing and Urban Development designated as the low income requirements is they instead use the census data instead, except where the housing and urban development data was obviously lower than the American Census data because that's the statutory requirements. So there are multiple avenues to go with determining the affordability requirements.
And the length of the exemptions? After eight years, that means that 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 place no longer has to keep the rent at that affordable rate, right?
Yeah, for the 12-year, the eight-year is just for market rate developments unless the city wishes to choose otherwise.
So in order to get any control over the affordability, we have to go with a 12-year exemption as a minimum?
So the if you're following the statutory requirements, then the 12-year is the only one that requires the city to institute affordability requirements. The eight-year can be given out to just market rate developments. But if the city chooses to do so, it could enact more stringent requirements to be able to receive that eight-year exemption.
Any other thoughts, Randy?
No, sorry.
Jake?
I also wanted to say amazing job on the preparation of the presentation. It was amazing. Do you know what Duval does exemption program?
Duval does not have program.
Woodinville?
Yes.
They do, okay. Because I was just thinking both of those have just had a huge multifamily development. So did you talk to Duval at all by chance or did staff?
I did not talk to Duval. I have reached out to every program that has adopted a program. Only about 50% got back to me, but we can present that information to you at a later date.
Perfect. That is all I have.
Yeah, thank you for that. That was beautiful. So my question to everyone, I guess, would be, is our goal affordable housing or is it more unit? And I'm assuming it's affordable housing, but is that the main goal of this? I know that we have growth.
I think we just need a little. So Commissioner Tuttle, her first question would be, so we're going to do a lot of work here. Is the city council going to take our advice and move this through? And what what direction has the city council given you for this project?
So it's on just kind of taking a couple of steps back. We, the adoption of the multifamily tax exemption program has been, as Liam mentioned, was one of the strategies that was specifically mentioned in the Housing Action Plan. And I know just in the six months that I've been here, a number of discussions with with various with various members of the staff. And I believe at least one planning commissioner and a couple of the city council members have just brought it up in in concept. So we really haven't had any discussions to narrow down exactly what that policy would be. But just as a reminder for for process, the planning commission will will forward a recommendation to to the city council. I could see a possibility that we might have a joint meeting with the city council to to have some of those discussions, but it I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that it's going to lean toward incentivizing the affordable housing. Just to keep in mind that statutorily, the the eight-year exemption is is just for for market rate housing. And we don't have a lot of multifamily currently under development, but we're getting, we're getting more inquiries about it. So I think that there's the market rate development is is doing okay, just from my observations. So but but it's open at this point to make a recommendation that would include the the market rate and affordable. And and as Liam mentioned in his presentation, the city has the the option of attaching an affordability criteria to the eight-year. It's just I, from from my experience, it's the the 12, the affordable housing groups are typically looking for longer exemptions than than eight years. And since and since the 12 years is available, that's that's, I think, typically where jurisdictions have fallen. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Did you get your question thoroughly answered?
I guess sort of because we're, we need, according to what you said, at least 816 units by 2035, just to maybe kind of keep up the flow we're at. So that's just to, that's if like nobody else is really moving here.
Yeah, that's if all development were to have halted.
If it was just a hall, so we really need a lot more than that by 2035, right?
Not necessarily. The current housing goal for the city of Monroe is, let me see that. It's currently 6,526 and currently the city has about 5,710. So that 816 should be a solid number for 2035.
And that's that those are just rentals that are available or or like, what's the 5,000?
So the 5,710 is how many housing units the city currently has in stock.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, I guess as part of the discussion, because Kelsey asked a question of if we had to come up with the goal. And I'm guessing for an official determination of that, it would probably be that joint meeting that you mentioned. But off going the recent, you know, Monroe vision statement that came out about wanting everyone to feel welcome. And there was a piece and discussion of families wanting to have their children stay in town. And then in talking to the people we represent, affordable housing is one of the first things everybody talks to me about. So my big push would be, I would be representing the want for it to be a goal of affordable housing.
Thank you, Kate.
So I just also want to remind you, we're about to embark on this lovely update of our Comprehensive Plan, which pushes our goals out to 2045. And so we will be bringing additional housing targets and population goals to you in the near future. So that that 816 is going to grow.
And just a reminder, the last time we reviewed targets for housing, we did not really take into consideration the affordability issue. We were looking focused on numbers to make sure we had enough housing for, you know, what the 20-year growth targets were that we would be able to accommodate everybody. But, you know, I look at Anita knows, I look at apartment data quarterly from, you know, a real estate informatics organization. And so we're not going to be able to, we had a chance three years ago. Planning Commission had a chance to, we had an applicant wanted to rezone a property to multifamily to increase our supply. We failed. We didn't get that rezoned. Affordability increases when you have adequate supply. A lot of what you're looking at here, Liam, I think everything that's brown, most of it is already built on. So for a developer to come in and bring any sort of multifamily R25 in there, he's going to have to tear down some, probably some actual affordable housing. You know what I mean? It's affordable, single family. So what we need is we need, developers are looking for buildable lands. So we're going to need a way to figure out supply. And I don't think, looking at the presentation, I don't think we need to help market rate development. So we have new multifamily in town. I'm looking at an average for all of our supply, 1,148 units. I'm looking at 1745 for two-bedroom. The ones, the new ones on Blueberry, they're asking 2,400. So those guys don't need help. We have 18% of our multifamily is one-bedroom. So basically 20-year-olds that are looking for a job in town, they're, the supply is just not there. So that's why two bedrooms went up so much in price is because they have to find a buddy to live with. And and so the market price of two bedrooms went up. Three bedrooms, there's only 12% of our multifamily is three bedrooms. So hopefully this sort of lines up with the data you're looking at.
Yeah.
And realistically, for a family that can't afford to rent a house, which are, you know, $3,000 and up a month, they need a three-bedroom apartment, an affordable three-bedroom apartment. And that's kind of why I don't think, you know, the new three-bedroom apartments are 25. And I I just don't think that as a planning commission, if we're focused on housing people and making changes, I don't think we need to help a market rate developer because they always find a way. And I know that for a fact because I know a number of the developments. I know a number of the apartment units that have, you know, turned over lately. They really don't need any assistance to make those work and make them cash flow. And what so what we need is we need to find that middle. In my opinion, we need to help the middle because I don't think we're going to be able to help the really low-income people. I think we're going to have to rely on places like or organizations like Housing Home that have the ability to acquire property virtually free, you know, gifted from the city, gifted from a school district, empty parkland or however they can get a grant to buy that. So I think we need to focus on the middle, like 50% to 100% of median income people that just can't quite afford the crazy rental prices of apartments in town. It's just, it drives me crazy to look at these quarterly, knowing that our apartments in town are more expensive than, you know, North Seattle or, you know, Shoreline or places like that. And people have to pay them because they obviously want to stay in town, right? They're, you know, they they might, you know, choose to or have to live somewhere else, but they they obviously want to be here. And they want to probably are working here. So we we need to figure out a way to to help those folks. Jake?
Red Zone? Okay, I was going to say, love what you say or love what you said, Commissioner Bowe, and just had a quick question. Lance, it it sounded like you said that the city does have some discretion on the eight-year to to use some affordability constraints on the exemption. Did you say that on the 12-year, it's it's mandated by statute that there are affordability requirements?
Okay, yeah, okay. So there is the 12-year, just to reiterate, the 12-year has to at a minimum require that 20% of the units are made affordable to moderate and low-income households. The eight-year has nothing, but other cities have implemented things.
Interesting. Okay. Yeah, because I was just going to say it it sounds like, or at least from the discussions that I've had with other other city leadership or the populace in general in Monroe, the desires to have more multifamily housing for all the reasons that Jay listed, affordability, young people not being able to get a home, small families who aren't able to qualify for a single-family home, but they need someplace to live. And and I think if we all have that desire to bring more multifamily, I think the overarching reasoning for that is affordability. So I think if if we continue to go in this direction, I think the program's brilliant. And I'm glad you guys kind of uncovered it and are going to start doing more research into it. I think it's a no-brainer to to lean towards the the 12-year just because of some of the limited info or the the screen that I saw with the cities that that compared the results from the eight-year and the 12-year. Definitely sounds like 12-years is a better option. And like you guys mentioned, it's it's statute, so. Anyways.
If I could just jump in with Randy and then we'll get to commissioners on video. Could we do a hybrid, though? Could we do a 10-year with 10% 50 to 80% adjusted?
So I don't believe you can do a 10-year.
You can't do a 10?
No, it has to be either eight, 12, 12 or 20.
Okay, okay. But I think the goal is to find a find developers that are looking to do that and make the affordability the right ratio. Like 10% of a, 10% of the units, 50 to 80%, 10%, you know, 80 to 100%, but make sure all the units look identical.
Right.
So that they're all interchangeable and that, you know, kids that come home from school, they don't know that 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 family makes 100,000 and that family makes 50,000. You know what I mean? They're all, it makes kids feel better if they all basically think everybody's the same.
Thanks.
Are those things that we can, that we could stipulate?
Yep, all of those things are things that you can stipulate. Redmond is pretty much exactly that way. All units have to be, to some extent, the same. And then they also break it down by how many percentage. So like for their 12-year, I believe it's like 10% have to be affordable to a certain limit. And then the next 10% have to be affordable to a lower limit. So there's definitely a lot of flexibility in how the city goes about adopting those requirements.
Also, can we go, can we make more than 20% of the units affordable, like 50, 70?
Yep. Yep.
But but then you run into resistance from developers, just to keep that in mind. There has to be a happy place where developers want to come in and build. You know what I mean? There's there's a place where everybody, you know, can make it work.
Another question is, on this map, what, which ones are you identifying as possible areas? I know you're saying the downtown area, but none of the words you're using don't match up with any of the color codes.
Yeah, so that should be the official, or that should be the downtown commercial area. If you see on the coding, that's pretty much the official downtown planning area. North Kelsey is just right north of that.
Clarify though, on the North Kelsey, it's the hash line where it was recently changed to allow the residential overlay. So you need both the commercial and the residential. If you bring, can you bring up the map again? And this, this hasn't been decided. This is just literally. Started, yeah. There we go. Oh, go back. There we go. So it's, it's was that west of Woods? Thank you. If you go, use your cursor, then go up, go up, go for North Kelsey. So the darkened area within the North Kelsey, so it's south and east of North Kelsey and west of Woods Creek, that area has been identified with a residential overlay. So that would also be eligible today. And then the third one that Liam was talking about are the some of the mixed use designations which are in that lavender and purple along Main Street also qualify. You have to have a component of the commercial and residential. So both uses have to be permitted and in existence as I understood it.
I have one more question. Can multifamily units include tiny homes?
That is a good question. I don't have the answer for you right now. I will look into that.
Thank you.
I don't think that it typically has. And, and the, the obstacle becomes how you define multifamily. And typically multifamily is going to be attached. And because I, that's, I, I know that there's been some groups that have looked, that have looked into that and I'm not, I'm not aware of a city that has redefined a definition to include a tiny home village to be classified as multifamily. Because it, there, there's, there's sort of an intersection of a number of codes. There's, there's state code statutory requirements for the multifamily tax exemption. There's building codes that define what multifamily is. And then there's a zoning code. So it's, it's I'm not aware of anybody that's pulled that off yet, but I know that that idea has been floated.
Right. Because there are, you know, not everybody wants to live in an apartment and there is a lot of people who not homeless people, but just regular people that are buying tiny homes to live in. And if you could rent one and Monroe is, you know, on the vibrancy and on the taking in new ideas. And I know that there are some communities that are mixing both. So you have apartments and you have some tiny homes in retail areas. So.
So I could see a project like if you had like what you're describing, where you have a diversity of housing and you have multifamily as we typically understand it as well as tiny homes that are interspersed in there. I don't believe that the tiny homes would be able to qualify under our current definitions, wouldn't be able to qualify for the exemptions. But you, but it could be a part of a larger project. And one other thing I just wanted to mention is that to keep in mind is, is that these can be mixed use developments as well. So the, the developments that have commercial and residential together and and, and the three zones that we have initially looked at all allow mixed use. So just keep that in mind as well. Those are harder to pull off, but they're, but it's, it's, it's a possibility.
Okay. And so the pink is around the Lowe's area, right? Or this darker pink, the general commercial. Is that true? Like when you first started talking about it, it seems like that would be a perfect place for all these multifamilies. But I know that land is probably really expensive. And then I was wondering, do we already have codes on how high we can go? Are there, how high can we? Is there restrictions on that already? Or we can have to go through that? Is that three? So that's, how long does it take to get something that changed or?
Yeah, I'm going to put a contact on this.
Okay.
We have a really big project we're getting started with. So we have to update this comprehensive plan, which kind of sets out all the policies of how and where, how we do things, where we do things. The second component of that is typically updating your development regulations or the municipal code. So that would be an outgrowth of whatever the planning commission and the council feel are appropriate to make changes to the community. What I'm saying is that we most likely will not be doing any code amendments unless they are specifically related to the comp plan or some corrections that we know we have to make until twenty twenty five. We've got to get through this other project. And of course, that's also depending on the mayor and the council telling us differently. But at this point in time, I would say an amendment like that would be an outgrowth after we complete our comprehensive plan update.
And most of our prior discussions related to maximum height were related to an elevator. The requirements that if you are above a certain number of stories, you need an elevator, which then is cost prohibitive for most of the developments in this area.
Yeah. And I remember Commissioner Tuttle also had a concern about protecting views. It, it, these are all messy and complex conversations that we will be having.
And none of them fall like, this is first, they're kind of all like coming together at the same time. Okay, got it.
Jake? Yeah. I, I was actually going to ask about mixed use as well, especially considering it the most likely option for density next is going to be that North Kelsey area. Kirkland and, and Woodinville, it seems like all their density has came from mixed use lately. So it would love in, in your guys' research, if you got more feedback from them on how you make that work or, or how they make that work, especially with the storefronts down below. And if the exemption applies to. Yeah, that's just a very interesting can of worms. And then I, on a, on another topic, I was going to ask, is there a precedent or does the city, would the city have the ability to embrace both like a twelve year and a twenty year? And do it almost, almost in tiers or, or more stipulations for a twenty year? Are you able, I guess, just to put it simply, are you able to, to use two of them or more?
Yeah, you should be able to. The, the twenty year, I, I would caution is a little bit different than both the eight and the twelve year because that's talking about permanent affordable homeownership, which is essentially you have to go into a covenant of ninety nine years to assure that permanent homeownership. So that one is a little bit different than what the eight year and the twelve year do specify. But yes, the city can offer multiple.
Awesome. Thank you. I can ask another question. I'm sorry. With the, the airport overlay, the way that it cuts through the North Kelsey area and, and Kate, I know this is going to be more of a comp, comp plan question. Has there been? Actually, I'll, I'll, I'll set it aside because it's mixed use tonight and all of that's.
That's okay. Because it, it's, I mean, the more questions you give us now, we have a better idea of some of the things that you're going to be anticipating.
Perfect. So the, the airport overlay, is it two or three stories?
Oh, well, it depends on if you're at the other ends, each end of the runway has the greatest height restrictions. If you're, I think that's the outer turning radius. So we'd have to come back with a little bit additional information for you to. I think there's more flexibility is what I'm getting at.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, because that was, that was my question. If it was going to put a limit on height in that tiny section that is within the overlay and the tiny section that isn't. If there is a height difference, or do you know as is right now, is the height limit, is it uniform throughout the city with the overlay? Or is it currently just limited to that area?
So the maximum, I mean, the maximum height, regardless of airport or not, is forty five feet right now. It doesn't matter if it's commercial, mixed use, industrial, residential, forty five feet. That's our maximum height. The overlay does have a different limitation, but again, it really depends on which zone it's in. And that's based on accident data for airport operations. Yes, the crash zone. But we'll, we can get you that information as well.
Thank you guys so much.
Yeah.
So, so just since we were talking about height, looking up in the code, there is a difference. And, and this is just for the downtown area. If you do a mixed use building, you can go up to fifty five feet, but non-mixed use is thirty five.
Yeah, we'll come back with those answers for you. Yeah, those are, yeah, yeah.
I'm also curious to know about Duval on if those residents are all coming from out of Duval or if like, if that's bringing, if that's making any housing for people that lived in Duval. I, I don't think it is. I think that's from the community that it's not. So I'm just curious. Without the restrictions, yeah, it's probably not helping this, the city itself, I'm assuming. Just think that that should be followed up on if you can. On if, if that's, if the Duval development has been helping the locals actually have affordable housing or not.
So I want to make sure I'm understanding your question. So Duval does not have the multifamily tax exemption program. Yeah. So is that what you're asking us to look into?
Basically, like, I guess, so did those, did the other ones that have restrictions on it help the actual residents of the city have affordable housing? Is it just bringing a lot of?
Oh, I see. Okay. So I think I understand your question. Yeah, no, no, no. I just want to make sure I'm capturing your question. So for the communities that have a tax exemption program and they were able to create new housing, did it help the residents already living in the community? Got it.
Okay.
So if you could just capture that, sorry. No, 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 that's good. That's why I asked questions. I want to make sure I understand what you're asking.
Is that data available, like a previous zip code of new tenants?
It would be calling those jurisdictions.
Yeah, I can, I can look into it. Definitely.
Another question, Jake.
Oh, no, I was going to say, is there a maximum on units for the tax exemption program?
No.
I, yeah, I was like, I, I guess it's not like Monroe has some hundred acre. Yeah, that's all the questions I have. Sorry for talking so much.
No, that's we need in everybody's input, including I want to hear from Janelle and Liz. Just put your, your little virtual hand up if you'd like to. There you go, Janelle.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? You can hear me? Okay. Um, well, first I just want to say I'm sitting here just soaking in everything. And this is very encouraging to me as I'm not only a new member of the planning commission, but as a newbie to the Monroe community. We've only lived here for four years and affordable housing is definitely i- in my opinion, a priority in this community. A lot of families that I, that I talk to and deal with through my, through my job with the school district, that is that is like a main, it's, it's just, it's, it's an issue. It's a barrier with a lot of families. So to hear just all the support of the planning commission as far as a recommendation or whatnot, that's, that's very encouraging. I myself would probably lean more towards the, the twelve year. Because the goal, the focus is affordability. Right? And I think that as a planning commission, if we're going to set that basis and say, this is our goal, affordable housing. You know, then that to me, I, I think that that's the, that would be the best one as far as a recommendation. And I do want to say too, Brandy, I appreciate you bringing that Imagine Monroe into, into what you, what you had to say, because I think it's very important that if that is what we are about, then we put that action behind it. So I appreciate everything that you all are saying. I'm just sitting here soaking it up. I'm not going to be very talkative tonight. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And I think Planning Commission coined a term achievable housing to to denote this type of housing so that it wasn't under the negative connotation of affordable housing that your social media posters tend to focus on. We call it achievable housing. That means folks can, you know, they can get into housing without it costs them fifty percent of their paycheck.
Yes, thanks for mentioning that. So actually, and in the housing action plan, we came up with attainable, but I like achievable too. I like it too. So yes, so that, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we want to, yes, it is, it is affordable housing, but sometimes like Jay said, it, it has a negative connotation to it. So we want to make sure that exactly like Brandy was saying, Imagine Monroe inclusive, everybody's included. So yeah, we, we definitely want to come up with, with different terms.
Thanks for clarifying. Liz?
Thank you. And I appreciate everybody's comment and hard work tonight. I lot of information to retain and I appreciate that. I also support and agree with everybody's comments. I'm needing more whatever the best term is for affordable housing for our area. And I don't know how to capture the best data. How do they track the numbers that were supporting the most number of people in the community? So that people aren't just moving into the units and then never moving out. So are they staying in that one unit for twelve years? And so more, so it's not benefiting more community members? Does that make sense? So as their financial position improves, they're not making that unit then available to another needing family. That's always my concern is that as people's financial positions improve because they're hopeful, hopefully their financial, they're financially able to grow and improve that then they can afford to either purchase or, and make that affordable unit then available to another needing family. That's always my concern with these units is being able to turn it over to another needing family. I don't know how we find that data to find out the turn rate for, I don't know if I'm wording it correctly, but so that how many people are actually reaping the benefits of these units? I fully support it. I just, you know, what is the turn rate for more families getting the use of these units? So that it's not just benefiting one family for twelve years. Does that make sense? Because I've seen that in a lot of other low income family. I've seen it here in Monroe. The same people stay in the same unit, even though they're driving very expensive cars. So I just would like to make sure we're benefiting as many families as possible as people's financial positions increase and improve themselves. So that we can benefit and help more, more families as possible. Especially those at the school district and are all levels in, in our community. And to some of the other commissioners' points, you know, when we wrote the rules for the North Kelsey District, we did put height restrictions in there. And that also went along with, it wasn't just Bridget Tuttle that brought up the point of, you know, one thing that brings people to Monroe is the beauty of our city. So, you know, when we start making our town look like Redmond with all the beautiful commercial buildings on the top and four and five story apartments above, you lose the views of the city. So let's just make sure we don't lose our views of Monroe because that is what brings people here. So I'm all for building apartments, but when we start building really tall, we're going to lose all of our views of our city. So I, I support adding apartments. I just don't want to lose all of our views here too. So but I, I, I do like the idea of possibly spreading them out throughout more parts of the city. I think that is more equitable and spreading them around and giving more access to more parts of the city too. I just think that gives more access to everybody in the city, not just creating pockets and putting everybody in a pocket. I don't know. I kind of, I feel like it spreads everything more equitable within the city. Because we have a lot of great resources in the city and at the same Because we have a lot of great resources in the city and at the same time, by the community members that came at our last meeting, traffic. I realize as we add more people, we're gonna have traffic issues. But, you know, we always have to take our city, our current city community members, their opinions into account. And we do get traffic issues. And when you throw up really large complexes, it impacts the traffic. So, and the traffic flows. And as city commissioners, we have to think about these things when we're adding these parts and pieces to our city. You know, it's a balancing act of, yes, we need the housing, but let's do it constructively. We have a railroad track that runs through our town. I come from a city of 300,000 that has a track that runs through the middle of town. If you don't do it right, we will create a mess as we grow. So I just caution us to think about these things while we're still small, to take these factors into account, to not create a nightmare for ourselves in 10, 20, 30 years. Let's think about these things now while we have the time to plan. So, but I do like, I do like all these ideas. So. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I guess time for us to ask you, Liam, if you've considered a gap year. Or do you already have your housing assignment? Or is a gap year a possibility?
I'm actually going to Copenhagen next semester, so not sure.
Yeah, I don't think we can top that.
Okay.
I did, I did want to really thank Liam for all the work that, that he's done. And, and it's been alluded to during other presentations here that Liam's really been working on all of the projects really that have come to the Planning Commission in the last few months. So it's, it's, we'll miss him and I know that he will do well in his, in his future endeavors. Maybe you'll come back and tell us about Copenhagen, how they do housing.
All right. So this will be, we'll see this again a few times at future meetings as we.
Yeah, we don't have, it actually is part of your program of work for this year, but we do not have a set schedule and it does not have a mandatory timeline. So where we can figure out staffing and move forward.
But this is obviously something very interesting to all commissioners.
Yes.
And one of the, so some of the things moving forward, some decision points and some things to consider policy-wise is, is one to look at more detail about the, the target areas. And I, we've just in discussion tonight have looked at, we, the way we've spoken about target areas have really included entire zoning districts. It doesn't have to be that broad. There are some communities that have very small areas and specific properties that they, that they've identified. Others have gone more broad. So there's a number of different examples. So that's something that we can talk about in, in more detail and narrow down the, where the city wants to land in terms of the, the, the level of program, the eight-year, 12-year, or 20-year, and possibly some examples of modifications that the city might want to look at, number of units. I mean, so there's, there's a variety of things that, that we can do. So I also want to, in the, in the groups that I've heard from, that were interested in this program have been the local housing providers. And to get their input on this and how, how this might work for them, you know, like what's the, it, there's, in some of these projects where you've got a mix of subsidized housing, if you will, and market rate housing, those projects are, they could be complicated to put together. And there's certain things that'll make them work for those kind of partnerships. And so we'll certainly bring them to the table and get their input as well.
All right. Get to discussion by commissioners and staff. Jake?
Um, I do not have much to say. I'm sad I missed the night out and missed the concert, which I heard was awesome as well. I, again, just want to echo Liam. Appreciate you. Awesome presentation. It was, it was very clear how much you researched it down to the decimal. So, yeah, thank you very much. And as usual, thank you staff for, for taking our shotgun approach questions. Such a good thing to, for us to keep in mind when we start going down the comp plan road. So, yeah. Don't have any updates, but thank you again.
Brandy?
Hi, I do have a few things tonight. So in talking with community members lately, and then I'd had a vacation this week, so I got to leave Monroe. And two things came up and it's sort of, I just want to give you guys a heads up of things that I've been thinking about of, that I'll be bringing forward with our comp plan discussions. But a lot of people talking about wanting more community gathering and community events. That has to do with us because we need to be sure we're planning spaces and zoning spaces that we can gather. Another thing that a lot of people have been talking to me about is the atmosphere that the traffic creates is not friendly to pedestrians. And when we don't have friendly pedestrian zones, our businesses suffer and so does the community as far as people aren't out as much walking around. And that happened to lead into, on my vacation, we left from Monroe Highway 2, went through Leavenworth and went to Shalane. And both Leavenworth and Shalane have excellent pedestrian-friendly atmospheres. And it's, it's kind of that vibrant people, community spaces, people engaging with each other. And I think the key to that might have to do with us planning better for making sure that we're pedestrian-friendly. And there's actually an organization that we can get certified through on becoming pedestrian-friendly. So that's been something that has been on my mind lately. And will probably continue to be through the comp plan update.
Thanks, Brandy. Kelsey? Go ahead. Tell us a little bit about yourself and.
Hi, thank you all for, I don't know, I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to be a part of this. I think it's really important. I think affordable housing is really important. So I'm excited. Please, if you have any notes for me or anything, let me know on how to like do this the most efficiently. And like the processes, I know that I have stuff I need to go through, but I'm excited to get it done efficiently, efficiently. I bought a house here two years ago. I've been warmly welcomed by Monroe. I really, really love Monroe. I'm excited to be a part of the vision of Imagine Monroe because I really believe all of those bullet points in there. And I actually participated in that questionnaire as well. I'm a real estate agent in the area. I don't know. I enjoy the river almost every day. And I can, I actually walked here today. I'm a pedestrian. And so I don't know, I'm excited to give back and to be a part of this. If you have any questions for me, just ask me because I'm being put on the spot. But you know, this is my first one, so I have anxiety. But yeah, anyone have any questions for me?
Very happy that you're willing to serve. Appreciate it.
I'd love to hear more about the comprehensive plan on understanding the goals, like how they all work together and what those, those 50-year goals are. Because I think the mayor mentioned that in the interview on, like, we have to hit these projections of growth. And if there's already something out there that I need to read on that, or if that's, if that's what we're creating, or I'd like to, I don't know who I'm looking at, but like.
So we're in the, we're right in, in the process of putting together a more detailed schedule with the consultants who are working in this. There's a whole lot of moving parts to this. Public Works is doing a lot of updates on, on system plans as well. But we'll be coming back to, to, to the Planning Commission with sort of the specific things that the Planning Commission will be looking at. I mean, we'll, we'll be looking at every one of the elements in the comp plan. So I guess the question of, you know, what to be looking at is I, I would read through the comp plan and, and just get a feel for that. And, and, and we'll be coming back to, to the, to the Planning Commission to talk about what this group will be, will be doing for the next two-year, two-year process for this project.
Because that Y is like the most important thing, right?
Yeah.
What is I want to feature to that? So.
Can I ask the commission, have you had a presentation? I know the city council was given a kind of an overview of the comp plan in late 2021 by Ben Swanson. Has this group received that on kind of growth management from the state down to the Pudsey Sound Regional Council Vision 2050 to Snohomish County's planning policies?
Ben did talk to us about that, yeah. But obviously, we've had.
We have new members, so I just want to.
We've had enough. Yes. So I think, okay, yeah. Because I don't even think Melanie was with it. It would just be me and Liz, right, Liz?
Yeah, I was gonna say, pretty much with all of our new members, I think it might just be a refresh. And I, Commissioner Bull, maybe Jake, maybe.
Yeah, but I think it'd be great to.
Did Commissioner Blair say it?
No.
Okay, so yeah, I think it would be worth a good refresher since half of us are new now. I think it would be good. Just my two cents.
And it's, it's all their enthusiasm is also. Once we're dealing with this thing every week for two years, you're not gonna want to ask about.
Well, there are a lot of interworking parts and it pulls in from.
Yeah. Yeah. Deep down, I will put a presentation or steal Ben's old one and have it at one of your next upcoming meetings.
Can we, you can, can we borrow Ben? Not saying your presentation wouldn't be fabulous, because all your presentations are great, but I'm just saying Ben's got it down like.
He, we've tried to coerce him to come back and he's like, I love parks. So Lance and I will take the lead.
When the 4:30 whistles goes off, he's gone, right?
Pretty much.
Okay, thank you.
Just something to say about going over the comprehensive plan. I sent a link to Kelsey and Janelle for the Department of Commerce's short course on local planning. If you haven't already, commissioners, I'd highly, highly recommend it. It's a really great overview. It's a three-hour free class done over Zoom. If you'd like, I can send you the link to the next one and it's good information.
And they're all a little bit different because they have different people that, that do those trainings. So even if you, even if you've watched it, listened to it, there's new things that they pepper in there all the time. So it's always good to refresh.
Cool. Janelle?
Um, I don't have much to say. Thank you for welcoming me to the commission. And I am grateful to serve.
Thanks for being with us. We appreciate it. Liz?
Um, I don't have too much more. Welcome to our new commissioners. It's exciting to have. Are we up to a full board now? Closer?
Thankfully, yes.
Yay. So welcome. Appreciate our new commissioners and we did get to see Ben at Economic Development, but that's a morning meeting. So that's probably why he was there. And, but there wasn't too much. I was looking back at my notes. Ms. Turtlelo did a presentation. I'm trying to remember. That was like a week or two ago. Yeah, there wasn't too much else though that we had. So that's about all.
Okay. Thank you. Kate?
I do not have anything further. Thank you again for your patience on the definitions. It is not easy to get through. I appreciate all your quick work on the downtown commercial zoning. Again, I hope to see that adopted in probably the second meeting in September. So moving forward.
Excellent. Anita?
I just wanted to welcome the new commissioners. And I actually did work with Janelle before she was on the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for the Housing Action Plan. So we did a lot of great work there. Thank you for joining the Planning Commission. And yeah, I just want to say, there's gonna be a lot of work with the multifamily tax exemption. I just, what Liam did was awesome. And I'm just trying to think, like wrap my brain around how I'm gonna get all this through. So yeah, I just, just please be patient. It, it's gonna take a lot of work because I don't have my, my helper. So, but, and, and great job, Liam. It was an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Anita. Liam?
Yeah, hello. It was so nice meeting all of you. Thank you for bearing through my first presentation to you all. But yeah, I'm excited to be here and it was really great getting to see you all and being here in person.
Okay, we're saving your desk for next summer, aren't we? For real? Yeah, good. Lance, good to see you.
Yeah, it's good to finally, to finally be in person and meet everybody. So I did want to share, just one thing real quick, we had a booth out at the National Night Out. And one of the things that we've been doing, we, because we're also doing booths at the, at the farmer's market as well. And we kind of realized that it's difficult to get into a long conversation about city issues in those kind of events. So what we have done is we have three very simple questions that we ask people. And it's what you like the most about Monroe and what you like the least and one thing that you would change. And it's been interesting to see some of the similarities in, in the answers. Traffic is one that comes up as something that people like the least. And, and at particularly at the National Night, National Night Out, one of the things that people said they'd like to change is, is more events and more things like that happening. So, so sort of what you were saying, we're hearing that from, from the public as well. And, and we'll, Kate's been keeping track of those and we can just put together some really, it's just, it's obviously unscientific, but it's, it's a way for us to at least reach out to folks and just ask them, you know, really, really simple things about what they're thinking about the community. And, and they love parks. They love parks. So I don't blame Ben. I told them that the day after. I said, I said, we, they actually, I think Mike came up to the booth and I said, somebody had just walked away and look at the thing they like the most, parks.
Sure.
Um, that's great that you guys are doing that. That's really impressive. I mean, that's huge. People don't usually get asked, those, those are three really good questions too. And that is how you get those good conversations started. So thank you for doing that and listening.
That's all I had. Thanks, Lance. Good to see you. Anna, what do you have for us? And thanks for being so responsive when I email. And with a smiley face, it just makes my day.
Smiley faces make everything better on a Monday. Um, I don't have anything. Just welcome to our new planning commissioners. We're very, very happy to have you here. And farewell to Liam. We were happy to have you.
Fantastic. Okay. Just want to say, yeah, echo thanks to the new commissioners. Appreciate your willingness to see us every two weeks and every week, you know, for the comprehensive plan. But just need to make sure you guys prepare that it's gonna be, okay, good. So if what, somebody would like to make a motion for adjournment?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Jake made a motion and Liz seconded. All in favor, please say. Jake made a motion and Liz seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. All right. Thanks, everyone. Really good meeting. Thanks, staff. Appreciate it.